I was gonna say.
Good evening, everyone. I call the meeting to order for January 26th, regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, rule call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right. Mr. Harp, we have a closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor Avery. There's no closed session report this evening.
All right. Thank you. Now is the time for the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and we have President Rajan Zed from the Universal Society of Hinduism, Reno, Nevada, will provide the invocation, and Councilmember Dixon will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And down here.
Hello. Can you see and hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
My hearty thanks to Mayor Brad Avery, councilmembers Muldoon, Dixon, Duffield, Blom, Brenner, O'Neil, and City Manager Gleis, for scheduling me to read invocation for the great city of Newport Beach. I shall be reading in Sanskrit from ancient Hindu scriptures, some as old as 1500 BCE, and then interpret in English. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky. This mother, saktasthamkaram karmasamachara saktho hacharan karma, paramapnuti purusha. Karma ne vahisamsiddhi mastitajanka adhyaa lokasangreha mevapi sampashankar tumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world by devotion to selfless. One attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of other zhalvis and mine. Om saha navavatu, saha nobunaktu, saha viryan karva bahai, jasvinava dita mastu, ma vidvisha bahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacles arise between us. Samneva akutti, samna hirdhya neva, samnamastu vamanu yathava susahasti. United you are all, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one, that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om. Shanti, shanti, shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om. Thank you.
Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance to our great, the flag of our great country. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, do we have a notice for the public?
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages committee participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay, and now it's time for council announcements and oral reports from the City Council on committee activities. Councilmember Brenner?
Yes, thank you. I did the orientation in my first meeting as a board member of the mosquito and vector control district, and that was very interesting, and I'll be cautioning everyone, probably every meeting, to turn over any saucers or bottle caps or anything that have water in them so that we can make this season less bothersome with mosquitoes than it was last year. I also did a tour of Crystal Cove Conservancy with Kate Wheeler, the president and CEO of the new cottages that they are currently renovating. I believe we have a couple of slides of that. It was very impressive, and they obviously are still raising more money for this. They've gotten some state money, but it's really remarkable what they're doing. They're raising these up and totally renovating them to their historical origin, and so it's pretty impressive. But one of the things that they talked to me about when I was there was their STEM education program. And as a nonprofit partner of Crystal Cove State Park, Crystal Cove Conservancy is dedicated to its mission of protecting the park's rare ecosystems, preserving the historic beach cottages, and educating the community's next generation of environmental leaders. In normal years, the Conservancy runs environmental education programs that invite underserved students to take part in ecological and engineering research studying how Crystal Cove ecosystems and beaches are changing over time. Due to COVID-19, the Conservancy has adapted their STEM education program for distance and hybrid learning, which are all available to, on their website for free to all of our students. They'd love to have help in pushing these programs out to teachers, homeschool groups, and after-school educators teaching science to students in grades two through 12. If you know anyone who might be interested, they can check out the website or contact Sarah Ludovace, Director of Education, by emailing sarah@crystalcove.org. The other thing was we had a homeless task force meeting, and Newport residents are frequently contacting our city staff and members of the council, asking how they can help the individuals who are experiencing homelessness in our community. We strongly encourage good giving instead of giving directly to people who are panhandling. Please visit newportbeachca.gov/give for information on the local organizations that provide assistance to individuals experiencing homelessness. Residents can also donate directly to the city of Newport Beach, and money will be dedicated to providing immediate and short-term financial assistance to those working hard to maintain their new housing or jobs or to gain access to needed services. We have several recent examples of people who have used these donations and really have turned their life around. I'm not going to give any examples, but we've got some specific examples if people are interested. Natalie Bass-Magen can talk to you about that. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Thank you. At the last TCA San Joaquin Board meeting, I was reappointed as the vice chair of the San Joaquin Board. A quick reminder, there are two boards for the TCA. One is San Joaquin, one is the Foothill Eastern. The San Joaquin is basically the 73. We had our Coronet Omar Residents Association meeting where Councilmembers Brenner and Blom and I gave a quick update. We had our Housing Subcommittee meeting, which is our discussion about trying to find compliance for Rena at our, let's see, it was last week. The big takeaway from that meeting was a discussion about the affordability issues and ways, potential ways to try to find compliance on the affordable housing side of that equation. As a quick update for everyone on council and out in the public, Newport Beach had filed two appeals. One was in joint with a handful of other cities that deal with, that were, that was addressing the Santa Ana Rena number, which is significantly less than what they have already approved. And so the request was to increase the Rena number up to what they've already approved. That was denied. Newport Beach's own appeal was denied, and so we will be continuing to move forward. And then today, we also had groundbreaking for the Fire Station Number Two, which we're calling it the Fire Station Number Two for now. We'll figure out what the name is at some point, but it's the, it's the replacement of the Lido Fire Station. And then real briefly, I asked the mayor to allow me a little bit of indulgence to remind folks that today is the one-year anniversary of losing nine members of our community, and I can't believe it's been a year. In some aspects, it feels like five. In some aspects, it feels like it was yesterday. And so I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that we were remembered. And we remember Alyssa Altabelli, John Altabelli, Carrie Altabelli, Gianna Bryant, Kobe Bryant, Peyton Chester, Sarah Chester, Christina Mauser, and Ara Zabayan. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. The Aviation Committee met last evening. I'm chair of the committee, and Councilmember Blom is vice chair, and it was our first meeting of the year where we reviewed our 2020 goals and defined our new goals, agreed on our new goals for 2021. So there's a lot of work ahead of us, an active group of volunteers on our committee and community members. I guess there were 37 community members on the Zoom call last night, so this is a continuing important issue for all residents, especially those residents who live within the flight path of airplanes taking off of John Wayne. So I look forward to a good year on aviation issues. And we announced at the Aviation Committee meeting last night that our new Congresswoman Michelle Steele has just been named to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee of the U.S. House of Representatives. I was texting with Congresswoman today, and she's looking forward to working with the city of Newport Beach, especially on our aviation matters, as well as dredging. So we will continue to have a good partner there. And just to follow up what Councilmember O'Neil mentioned, we did our official groundbreaking of the Fire Station Number Two, formerly known as Lido Fire Station. So we're going to be doing another, what should we call it, survey in terms of the name of the fire station because it resides now in Cannery Village. It's moved from Lido, but as Chief Boiles pointed out today, it's within two storefronts of the original fire station on Babo Peninsula, which is still looking like, has the two garage doors or front doors, loading doors of the fire station. So that was called Central Fire Station, so maybe there's some juxtaposition of these names. But we will be doing, public information, we'll be doing another survey because we'd like to get the community involved to help name this important new fire station. So we look forward to finalizing that. But another great project for public works to add value to our community and public safety. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Mr. Blom.
Thank you, Mayor Avery. I want to thank Mayor Avery for putting me on the Aviation Committee and Diane for chairing it. It's been an enlightening experience. We had a great time last night in hearing from the community at large and their concerns. As I told Chairwoman Diane, I've been hearing about the airport since 1979, when my father would yell at them, about them as I was one year old, and they were too loud then. So we will continue the diligence on working with the community on getting that under control, and thank you. That's all I have to add.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it took six years, but we finally got word last week from the Army Corps in Washington, DC, that Newport's dredging project will receive $6.77 million this year, and the impact to the harbor is immense. The removal of 1 million cubic yards of muck and sand will promote tidal flow that is essential for our water quality. Twice daily, incoming and outgoing tides keep the bay water moving. The more movement, the better distribution of nutrients, and the less stagnation occurs that contributes to the pollution in the water. The 2012 dredge of 600,000 cubic yards increased the harbor's water quality and promoted eel grass growth, and we now are seeing amazing species of fish returning to our bay. A big thanks goes to all those involved, like Dave Webb, Chris Miller, Scott Cunningham, Mayor Avery, our finance committee, our lobbyists in Washington, and special thanks to Congressman Ken Calvert and Congresswoman Steele for keeping the pressure on the Army Corps to accomplish this goal. The Army Corps Fiscal Year 21, 2021 Work Plan includes dredging our harbor, but also funds a vital upstream project called the San Ana River Mainstream Project, which they are calling the most significant flood control project in the western United States. Sediment will no longer be a threat to the harbor, so the dredging work will not be compromised in future years. Getting Washington to help our recreational harbor has been the challenge. As a pleasure boat harbor, it's hard to make a case for funding dollars when we don't have a warship, nor a commercial fishing business, or a cargo shipping industry. But our persistence and the fact we spent our own city money to get the project shovel-ready paid off big time. Our city competes with every waterfront municipality in the state, so offering to match monies, do all the testing and permitting upfront, and agree to a one-and-done project really got the decision-makers in Washington, DC in a positive way. We are now truly on our way to preserving our city's greatest asset, the harbor. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. First, I just want to congratulate Councilman Duffield and the amazing work, and also Commissioner Cunningham. Most anyone else who's really spearheaded this. Really, them along with Dave Webb and our Washington allies have worked so hard on, for this. This issue is actually about saving the bay. It's almost an environmental issue. It goes to water quality. It goes to the use of the bay. It goes to how it affects upstream, not just downstream. So it's amazing accomplishment. I know it's one reason why Duffy ran for council, and, and one thing he fights hard for. So congratulations on that, all that work. The fact that he wrote a speech says enough, you know, says how much you care. Mayor, no one knows better than Foreign Mayor Will O'Neil, Councilman O'Neil, about the hardship that we went through a year ago. Thank you again for your leadership in that, Will, and my heart goes out to all the families and friends who lost someone to the tragedy. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to say that, that the, the award for dredging is, is huge for us, and it's huge for the health of our bay and for businesses and residents. And the difficulty of this is you can't, people can't see it. You know, you look at the bay, everything looks fine, but the bottom, you know, is in a state of continually rising and making a shallower, a shallower bay, and it happens over time. And so the whole thing is to really maintain the depth and always try and stay on it. And there's no one more singularly responsible for this than Mr. Duffield, who came on the council. This is one of his chief objectives. It impacts the entire city, and his constant effort and his ability to round folks up to the cause, extraordinary. So it's, it's incredible effort on everybody's part, but definitely Mr. Duffield led it, and it's a very good thing. And I think I have a slide here. So we've got a city council planning session Saturday, January 30th. It's coming up, 9:00 AM to noon, and we're doing this in the chambers, correct? I liked it when we did it at Marina Park, but chambers will do just fine. And so this is a really great thing for the public to, to watch or attend. It's update on the city's financial status, budget development, capital improvement projects. And there you see at the bottom how to access for the public, newportbeachcove.gov, and NBTV in the community room, or in the community room. So we do this every year, and it sort of, the, the projects are, are big, they're important, and, you know, all of us on the dais up here, I think from time to time, we hear from people and say, oh, I never knew that was happening, or nobody told me about that. Well, this is an awful good thing to attend for those folks because you really get a broad view of all the effort the city's going to provide, infrastructure and services to the public going forward, and not only next year, but in years forward. So it's an excellent thing to, to attend and be informed. Thank you. One more. Oh, okay. And this is a circulation visioning workshop has been rescheduled, and this is good to note. It gives everybody a little more time to plan to attend. February 10th, 6 to 10, 6 to 8 PM. So it was originally January 27th, so a little reprieve. And those who have registered will receive an update through Zoom, and if you haven't, there's the link, newporttogether.com to register. And the workshop will help integrate the community feedback on transportation and mobility into the city's general plan update. And I've attended a couple of these, and they're really very good. And I'll tell you, we, staff and council, we need the public's input on this for any ideas, really, any contributions to help us improve the circulation of, we're talking about traffic here, and how that integrates with our, looking forward to the various projects and zoning going on in this town. So it all comes together at this circulation visioning workshop, and it's really critical to our future, especially considering our potential for, for adding more housing through the Rena process down the road. So this is also a very important thing to attend, and I will say, the past events have been lightly attended, so this goes back to folks sort of being surprised a year or two later that, oh, you know, I wasn't informed. But we've been reaching out as hard as we can to make people aware of these important workshops, to give residents and businesses, and those just interested generally, a chance to put in, to provide input. And I'll tell you that many times, public input has shaped the direction of what we do, and it's critical. And so when we see only 20 people or 30 people show up on a Zoom meeting, when I think it should be 200, because if you own a home here, you own a business, it's going to impact you down the road. And if you're just walking around town, it's going to impact you, and if you're driving a car, it's going to impact you down the road. So it's a chance to get in on the, sort of the ground floor of major decisions going forward on circulation in Newport Beach. Thank you. Okay.
Mayor Avery?
Yes.
Would I be able to make a quick announcement?
Yes, I'm sorry, Grace. Yes, please.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just so excited because I'm pleased to introduce our new Finance Director, Scott Catlett. He's up here. If you can just stand up very briefly. Scott comes to us from the city of Yorba Linda, where he was Finance Director, Finance Director there for five years, and previously he was with the city of Riverside for about 10 years, including being the Assistant Finance Director there. He has taught at Cal State University, San Bernardino. He's going to be the president-elect for the California State Municipal Finance Officer Association. So he comes with a wealth of experience and well-respected throughout the state, so we're just so pleased to have him, and he's hit the ground running. He's already attended his first Finance Committee meeting, and you'll be hearing from him at the planning session this Saturday. He and his wife Kelly, who's a deputy DA for Riverside County, have three beautiful young children, all under the age of six, so I think they don't sleep, is what I gather. But it's really great to have him on board and look forward for more interactions with council and with the community shortly. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome, Scott. Now, we're moving on to the consent calendar. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar? Or conflicts to announce?
None.
Any items? Thank you. Councilmember O'Neil.
Noting only that City Manager has pulled the receivem file portion of item number three. I have nothing.
Ms. Dixon.
I have none. Thank you.
Mr. Blom.
None. Thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Mayor Protem.
Just briefly, I think Councilman Duffield has a conflict to announce on number, item number three, for the portions that are remaining that weren't polled.
Oh, that weren't polled? I didn't know. Okay, yes. Mayor, I have a conflict, a business conflict on item number three.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you. Like to lodge a no vote on item three and four.
And I have nothing. Mayor Protem, do we, do you have a motion?
Just for clarification, Councilman O'Neil, did you say you had a statement on one of the items?
No, what I was saying was, at our study session, the, our city manager had noted that she was polling the item, the portion of number three that would be the receivem file, and so I was just noting that for the, the motion.
Great. I'll incorporate that in my motion and move the balance consent calendar, items one through 10, with an amendment to item number one, a no vote for myself on item three and four, and recusal on item number three from Councilman Duffield for the sake of business conflicts.
Great, thank you. And do we have any public comments from the community room on the consent calendar?
Mayor Avery, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. I wanted to comment on item number three, which is the second reading of an ordinance establishing new rules for the issuance of marine activity permits. As was just noted earlier this afternoon, the city manager acknowledged that the four sample maps that were going to be part of this needed more work and should be deferred to a future meeting. I think the whole ordinance could use more work. The indication of that is that two weeks ago, before introducing the new text, you held a study session, and at the study session, many of you expressed numerous concerns, uncertainties, questions about how the new ordinance would work, to which I don't think the city staff had quite adequate answers. Under those circumstances, rather than plunging ahead with adopting something that was clued together that night two weeks ago, I think the proper course would have been to send the ordinance and a list of the concerns and questions you had about it back to the Harbor Commission so that they could review it and understand more carefully the answers to your questions, and only then should it have been brought back to you for reintroduction and adoption. Had you followed that course, I think the city would have a significantly better product. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any phone calls? We have one call. Hello, please mute any devices you have. Please mute your device. Please mute your device. Please mute your device. Any other calls? Thank you. Yes, Ms. Dixon.
I apologize for this, but I did, on consent item number seven, which is the Orange County Economic Grant Program, I just, I wanted to not pull it as much as have a comment about it, if it's possible.
Yes.
For it and told my request for staff to just explain. I think it's worthy to communicate this to the community more broadly, so businesses are aware of this opportunity to apply for grants. And I know I didn't prepare you for this, but if you could just explain it so people are aware of it, business owners are aware that they can apply for grants.
Sure, Councilmember Dixon. Yeah, we're very pleased that the county did do an allocation from the general fund, and they allocated 2 million per district, and then by pro-rata share, population share, we received our allocation of 290,000. So staff, with the work we had done- So staff, with the work we had done previously in providing business grants, are going to do this internally, so we can allocate that full amount out. And it'll be allocated out as $5,000 grants to businesses that meet a set of requirements, which they can see on our website or on the staff report. So we're going to begin just immediately as we, with approval of this, you know, action here by council tonight. And we're really happy to provide additional assistance to our business community that certainly is needed during this challenging time period.
Very good. Thank you. I hope our businesses have heard this announcement and can apply, and they can go to the city website. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional comments from council on the consent calendar?
We need a second, Mayor.
All right, do we have one? Mr. O'Neill? Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance number 2021-3, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Title 17.10, Marine Activities Permit of Title 17, Harbor Code of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, and other related provisions. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, now we'll turn to public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments from the community room at this time? All right, seeing none. Do we have any phone calls? All right, no phone calls.
Do you think we have somebody? Tim Whitaker?
He has Tim here?
Yes, he's here to speak in this.
Okay, great. So if we could, we'll just break in here. We have a happy moment to address here. Mr. Tim Whitaker, from the county.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the city council, and city manager and staff. So you know what you were just raising there, Councilwoman Dixon, about the check for the $290,000. Well, I have in my hot little hands right here, because your mayor has been very, very diligent on the backside with that. And so we made sure that since that was coming up today, that we'd have the check ready so that we can present. And all I need you to do, Mr. Mayor, is just acknowledge receipt of this from me, and I can give you this $290,000 check that you can start to apply to your small businesses right away on behalf of the Second Supervisory District.
Well, this is great.
And then just real quick, so people understand, as you know, supervisor's deal is now Congresswoman's deal. The district has transitional staff. I'm in charge of the district right now until we seat a new supervisor. And so we do have fully operational staff, so we're still here, we're running full bore. Any one of you gentlemen and ladies have a question, need any help on anything, you know how to reach me, you should all have my cell phones, as well as does Grace and the executive management team. So we're still running full steam and ready to do what we need to do to help Newport Beach accomplish its mission on behalf of our mutual constituents.
Great, well, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Want me to bring this to you, and you can sign for it, real quick?
Sure.
All right.
Approach. We've been planning this for weeks.
Yes. You know, it's almost as if that was planned. So here's mine. There's yours.
Great. Thank you, Tim.
If there's any questions, real quick, if you wanted to, I'm thinking I can try to address, talk to me about the dredging thing, we'll see what we can do. What else I was going to bring up, real quick, since I'm here, there should be more coming. This was something that the board addressed in late November to get approval on. And so we're well aware of the challenges out there in all of our cities with our small businesses and whatnot. And so this is not, this is hopefully not the end, and we're every day doing what we can do to explore things, to come up with ways to help everyone recover, stay in business, and move ahead. Excuse me?
I have a question for the acting supervisor.
Oh, no, 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 I'll get in trouble.
All right.
I'm not a voting member, I'm just head of the transition staff.
Head of the transition staff. This is for our community to understand and have patience with Athena. Could you give us an update? Because many of us have been waiting patiently to get a response after registering. So this is really more broadly to our whole community, because it's been very frustrating.
Absolutely. And if I may be candid, the Athena website is really, really horrible. The challenge that's going on right now is, from the time that the site got stood up, once we knew we were going to start doing the vaccinations, it was, and it is right now for only Tier 1A people only, which are 65 and older, you can go and look on it and read what it is, and then some other, like, first, frontline troops that are dealing with it. And the site was so overloaded by everybody trying to get in front of line, it crashed the site. And so the website was built specifically for this. It's, you know, we're all stumbling through a pandemic we've never been through. It's frustrating to me, representing the second district here for everybody to, there are a lot of well-meaning hands, and everybody's not on the same page or trying to be, and the most discouraging part of that, of course, is with the state not giving the allocations of vaccines that we really, really want, all the vaccines that come to Orange County, we only keep 20% of it. The other 80% is allocated out to hospitals, medical providers, and whatnot. And then the Athena page, you just have to keep trying on it, they're working on it daily to fix it. There's also a number at the Emergency Operations Center for COVID vaccine, 714-834-2000. Again, 714-834-2000. And folks can call there direct for help. If they're not getting relief through there and getting tied up, call me at the office, Again, 834-3220. We're doing our best to get things stood up. I know that you guys have been very, very diligent, was just talking to your fire chief back here, and he's submitting a letter to Dr. Chow for you guys to move forward on some things. And we were just talking about, I'm going to follow up behind that with a letter of support. And
Thank you so much, Tim.
As more vaccines come in, it'll happen more quickly, and that's the biggest trouble. But in the meantime, we're falling forward.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's it?
Thank you for that present. It was very nice.
Everybody, have a good night.
All right. Okay, our first public hearing item is the 4400 Von Karman Project. And before we start, does anyone have a conflict or ex parte contact they would like to announce regarding this item? Councilmember Brenner?
Yes, I met with the Pacerne Group, I met with some SPAWN representatives, I talked to Derek Ostenstein, I'm sorry, I'm not saying that right, as well as Melanie Schlotterbach, and Adrian and Fred Fochet.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, I have a conflict as a member of the Pacific Club located at 4110 MacArthur Boulevard in Newport Beach, California, 92660. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
Yes, I spoke with both the project applicant and the nearby business residents, business owners. I too spoke with the Pacerne Group representatives and Mr. Ostenstein, I think that's same, Derek, Dwight Belden, and the Fochets as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Blom?
I have spoken with the Pacerne Group as well as the Olend as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Duffield?
Yes, I also met with the Pacerne Group, and I spoke with a tenant of Dwight Belden, our property owner.
Mayor Protam, Muldoon?
Yes, I've spoken with the applicants, Pacerne Group, and two parties that objected to the applicant's proposal, including members of the condominium group. Thank you.
And I have spoken with representatives from the Pacerne Group and also from SPAWN. Okay. So do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Avery. Simone Jurdis, Community Development Director. With me is Deputy Director Jim Campbell. We do have a staff presentation, and the applicant also has a presentation. We can do our presentation or just focus on the kind of the high-level items. It's whatever your preference is, Mayor Avery.
Is council okay with moving on to the higher-level presentation? Let's do that.
Thank you. Jim Campbell?
Certainly, thank you, Simone. Again, Jim Campbell, Deputy Community Development Director. I do have a presentation, I'll maybe focus on a couple of those slides. But the thing I want to really stress here at the high level is that this project is consistent with the general plan. In 2006, and it will come up here momentarily, in 2006, we did a new general plan update, and we added a considerable amount of housing in the airport area, as well as other areas of the city. I have no control over the presentation. There it goes. I'm making it quick. And so within the 2006 general plan update, we planned for housing for the arenas of that time, as well as future arenas. And so this project is just a furtherance of that. We did a conceptual development plan back in 2010, and I'm stuck on the project vicinity map. So I will jettison the presentation and just wing it here. But it is in the airport area, it is in an area designated for housing, as I indicated. We did environmental review for this project. It does have, it was cleared, and we do feel the addendum is appropriate. We do have responses to comments, we had quite a number of comments before the last meeting, and we continued it to this evening to provide responses. So that's in your packet, and we, so we do feel that the addendum is appropriate. We do have a couple of minor changes to the project since it went to the planning commission, and we're basically increasing the separation between the buildings, 4910 Birch. So we're creating a 50-foot wide space, and that actually widens the park area, and that is actually hopefully addressing some concerns with that building owner. And also, the applicant is proposing to change the location of the freestanding parking structure that's part of the project site, and moving it away from one of the other buildings that are there, 4340 Von Karman. And so hopefully, that will address some of the compatibility concerns. I can't guarantee that it addresses all their concerns, but, you know, we had our environmental consultant evaluate those changes, does it change the outcome of the analysis? And the answer to that is no. We do have a memo to that effect that was put at the dais here from Kim Lee Horn, who's our environmental consultant on this. They are available if there's any questions, if we get into that. Ms. Dana Privet is available for questions on that. So in a nutshell, we do have a development agreement here, it does provide significant public benefit to the community if it's approved. The environmental review has been cleared, it is consistent with the general plan, and I can go through those policies and those points if the council so desires. Ultimately, we do ask that the council have, conduct a public hearing this evening, take any public testimony. We do have a set of recommended actions in the staff report, which include adoption of two resolutions, one for the environmental review, and one for the project approval, the entitlements, if you will. And there are two ordinances here for your consideration this evening, and that is for the community, Plan Community Development Plan Amendment, where we're amending the Coal Center Newport zoning regulations to accommodate this project. I can describe that in detail if you like, but the second ordinance is for that development agreement. And that concludes my remarks, and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Do we have any questions? Ms. Dixon?
Yes, Mr. Campbell, just a quick question on the addendum on the freestanding parking structure setback, as well in reading this. So in order to accommodate a smaller footprint, are they adding a floor or a story to the parking structure? So from four stories to five, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, they are. They're basically making the footprint smaller, and then it'll go a little bit taller. And we evaluated that, since that change was proposed on Friday, we don't feel it changes the outcome of the environmental analysis, but it is a slightly larger parking structure. It's not visible, and it's in an office area, and so it's not publicly visible, is what I'm getting at. So we didn't feel it changed our recommendation at all.
Okay, so I'm sure we'll hear from the applicant, as well as the business owners. I just, was this part of a negotiation with the neighboring business owners?
That's a very good question. My understanding is that it was. The applicant has been discussing the project with a variety of the business owners in the area, and the two changes I outlined, one to increase the separation to the one building, 4340 Von Karman, is to address some of their concerns, and then the same with this increased setback for the parking structure, again, to address some of their concerns. And I think the applicant can maybe provide additional information. Now, they do have a presentation to kind of show the project in more detail, if you'd like, and they can be called upon to answer any other questions.
And I just have one other question. This really goes back to the planning commission and the process of the planning commission. Does the planning commission, when looking at major projects such as this and all other projects, do they get into the details of the materials that are going to be used in the construction of those projects? And was that, was the materials discussion, was that part of the planning commission review?
The planning commission does review the materials. It wasn't a central aspect of their evaluation. You know, the materials on the exterior, the architect can kind of go through what those are, but they're high-quality materials. We feel the architecture, as based upon the plans, was acceptable, and the planning commission does recommend approval of the project. And that was something I maybe did not prepare in my remarks here. We also have a recommendation of approval of the park with, from the PBNR Commission that occurred in December, but also again, last night, to address a concern about potential Brown Act violation. So we have both the planning commission and the PBNR Commission recommending approval of the project.
And then one final question, was the park expanded based on this adjustment?
It's a very small expansion, approximately, what's the difference? In just that one area between that one building, it went from 33 feet to 50 feet, so it's a little wider, you know, it's a minor change.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions from council before we go to the applicant? All right. So let's go ahead and open the public hearing, and I would like to hear from the project applicant first, and we'll give up to 15 minutes for their presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and members of the city council. I'm Greg Nakahara. I've been with the Pacerne Group for the past 30 years. We would first like to thank city staff, Simone, Jim, Roslin, and many others for their dedication, hard work, and professionalism in guiding our team to bring this development before you tonight. And of course, we want to thank members of the planning commission, Park Beaches and Rec Commission, and ALUG for their public service to the Newport Beach community. In addition, we would like to thank Scott and Jerry from the Coal Company, and all the community groups and owners who have provided their support. However, we do not disparage the few who have sent letters of concern to the city council as they have provided valuable feedback. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to introduce the Pacerne Group. Next slide, please. Next slide. Okay. Stable. The Pacerne Group is a family office for Ken Pacerne, with headquarters in Newport Beach. Prior to founding the company in 1988, he worked for his family's company, Pacerne Real Estate Group, which was founded in 1925, and has a diversified portfolio of commercial assets, market rate, and affordable apartments. Ken continues to own 20% of his family's company. The Pacerne Group is privately owned and completely self-funded, which is a throwback to how real estate investors, developers, operated 30 years ago. But unfortunately, in our opinion, it is extremely uncommon today. Reliable. TPG is the developer and owner of One Uptown Newport, and we assure you, we will execute with the same thoughtfulness and attention to quality and detail on the proposed development. The one question which is underappreciated in city council meetings such as this one is, who is the long-term owner? Are they an absentee owner that lives in another state? Will they continue to invest the capital necessary to maintain the quality? Is the true owner a private equity investor in New York that cares more about their return than the community in Newport or the building residents? Are they simply going to sell the property or the rights to develop the property to the highest bidder? Community-minded. The first goal of TPG as a community-based developer is to build a project that overall provides a public benefit. At our core, we are urban planners focused on our development, being compatible and accretive to our surrounding environment, and with an eye to the long term, as we are not sellers. to our surrounding environment and with an eye to the long term as we are not sellers. Ken lives in Newport Beach and is raising his family here. He is committed to doing what is responsible for the city. A behavior we have noticed among our fellow developers is they attend state-of-the-city events only when they are seeking approval of their projects. We attend every one and support all the state-of-the-cities in every city we invest in. As long-term investors, there's nothing more important than the state of the cities that we are community members in. One of the major ways TPG supports cities is giving back through the Pasern Family Foundation. And within TPG, the senior executive team are all board members of the foundation. Ken has set it up this way so his senior executive staff understand that giving back to our cities is a high priority and integral part of our business operations. Experienced. It takes a lot of effort, know-how, and a seasoned team to bring a development like the residence at 4400 Von Carmen to fruition. TPG is truly blessed with the top people in the industry who lead our land and entitlement, development, construction, finance, and property asset management departments, and are the foundation of our stability and reliability now and into the future. And the last thing I would like to mention is, despite Ken's success, he is accessible and willing to engage with anyone from city council member to community activist. He's not sitting in an ivory tower, but is ready and willing to get into the arena, which many of you have experienced, as well as many of the folks in this room with us tonight, our supporters and some who we continue to have ongoing discussions with. With that, I would like to introduce Ken, who will provide an overview of this project.
Thank you, Greg. Mayor Brad Avery and members of the city council, thank you for your service to our great city and for the time you've taken understanding our proposed project. My part of the presentation this evening will cover the areas of land use, project history, and community outreach. I will then turn the presentation over to our development team and parking consultant to discuss our building design, park design, and parking plan. I will finish with a brief discussion about our housing crisis. In 2010, the city unanimously adopted a plan allowing the ability to develop residential within the Kohl Center, which is in complete compliance with its CCNRs. A collaborative community outreach process resulted in a project design that encompasses the desire of the community as a whole, affordability, proper scale and spatial arrangement, and a public central park. It also addresses critical housing needs. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. The Kohl Center was established in 1973. People who grow up in Newport Beach will tell you it was in the middle of nowhere at that time. 33 years later, city leadership through the 2006 general plan update provided a new land vision, land use vision for the entire city, including the airport submarket. Of course, this is because from 1973 to 2006, the city of Newport Beach experienced tremendous growth and needed a new vision for the future. In 2010, the Integrated Conceptual Development Plan, or ICDP, more specifically designated areas within the airport submarket for residential use. Next slide, please. The 2010 ICDP allows for a density of 260 residential units on our subject property. However, the California Density Bonus Law lets us increase this density by up to 150% based on providing different percentages of affordable housing. This would actually allow us to build 390 total units on this property. Notwithstanding, given the desire to create a project that integrates well with its surroundings and with the attributes that are important to the community like affordability, a central park, mid-rise building design, and appropriate scale and massing, we concluded that a 312-unit project with 13 very low-income units and 299 above-moderate income units produced the optimal result. Both the 13 very low-income units and the 299 above-moderate income units can be applied toward the city's arena requirements. It is important to note that the very low-income units cost the project approximately $1 million per unit in value. The California Density Bonus Law is legislation intended to defray some of this cost by essentially lowering a project's land cost through increased density. We estimate that increasing our unit count from 260 to 312 units lowers the cost of providing the very low-income units by 40% at no cost to the city of Newport Beach. Without this density bonus, providing the very low-income units would not be feasible, and we would not be required to provide them. Every bit of affordability that we can gain is critical, given that there have only been two conventional apartment projects built in Newport Beach in the past 20 years. Next slide, please. Here, we see the boundaries for the 2006 general plan amendment, the 2010 ICDP, the residences at 4400 Von Carmen, and the Uptown Newport master plan. Next slide, please. This slide depicts our unanimous approval from the planning commission. Next slide, please. Our process involved collaboration with the four groups listed on this slide. City staff and the various city and county governing bodies, e.g., planning commission, parks, beaches, and recreation, and ALUG, the Coal Company, community-based activist groups like SPON, the Chamber of Commerce, People for Housing OC, Californians for Homeownership, and Affordable Housing Access, as well as Kohl Center Newport building owners within close proximity to our project. Even though our project, our proposed project is sanctioned by and implements the 2006 citywide general plan update and the 2010 ICDP, good urban planning necessitates the need to listen to these groups, understand their concerns, and arrive at a design that combines reasonable results for all involved. The previous applicant's luxury high-rise condominium project was opposed passionately by many of these community groups. Therefore, they bonded together to voice their objections. However, our proposed project, with a few minor exceptions, received very constructive input from all of the above-mentioned groups. As a result of our process, we are pleased to present a project that has a recommendation for approval from city staff, unanimous approval from the city of Newport Beach Planning Commission, the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, and ALUG. In addition, we met with several of the SPON board members on a handful of occasions. We found them to be open to debate, collaborative, and realistic about the need for thoughtful urban redevelopment. In fact, we received a very nice letter of support from one of those board members, Mr. Don Crody, who wrote, "SPON would have liked a commercial component, but recognizes that the benefits of the project outweigh the impacts. Unfortunately, our need to eliminate a commercial component is a byproduct of the desire for a central park, the desire for very low-income units, and the desire for an appropriate project scale. Retail simply does not fit after designing for these other priorities." Next slide, please. "We have received support from the Kohl Center ownership and property owners representing a majority of the leasable office space in this area of the Kohl Center. We do not feel it necessary to meet with property owners outside of the practical sphere of influence of our project. In addition, we continue to try to find common ground with the other property owners who are either, in our opinion, apprehensive, committed to preserving the status quo, or concerned about their own individual interests." Next slide, please. "In response to the previous applicant's project, the Kohl residences, SPON, and others opposing that project presented an alternative vision for this development called 'a more appropriate starting point for the Kohl residences.' This slide summarizes what was contained in their published comments. Mid-rise development, 70 feet to 75 feet versus the previous applicant's high-rise development at 156 feet. Integrated one-acre central public park versus a separate, isolated park. Scale and spatial arrangement is harmonious and consistent with Kohl Center development and design standards. Every parking space eliminated by virtue of our building footprint and the freestanding garage will be replaced. Critical housing needs met, i.e. increased affordability." Next slide, please. These next three slides simply show our response to the feedback received. Three separate, this is the prior application Kohl Center residences, three separate high-density towers, 15-story high-rise buildings, two levels of above-grade parking garage, overall height 156 feet. The red line in the, on the image at the bottom of this, at the bottom of this page shows the height of our project relative to the previous applicant's project. Next slide, please. "The community request was revised to mid-rise apartments and condominiums limited to four to five stories. Of course, our project is a five-story mid-rise podium apartment at approximately 70 to 75 feet, compatible with the Kohl Center neighborhood." Next slide, please. "This slide compares the previous applicant's remote park to our one-acre central park. Our central park is intended to create a village green type feel and reasonable separation between our project and neighboring office buildings." Next slide, please. "This slide shows the typical separation between buildings in our project's area of the Kohl Center. Note that the distance between existing office buildings ranges from 35 feet to 60 feet." Next slide, please. "In this slide, you can see that we have maintained the Kohl Center building separation standards between our project and our immediately neighboring properties, 5000 Birch Street, 4440 Von Carmen, and 4910 Birch Street." Next slide, please. "As we will emphasize in this presentation, every parking space eliminated will be replaced with parking that is equivalent in terms of convenience and superior in terms of quality, i.e. cover. 546 surface parking spaces have been or will be eliminated between areas 2, 3, and 7. You'll see that on a subsequent slide. 560 parking spaces provided will be provided within two garage structures. Apartment, office, podium garage in Area 7, 276 spaces, and a freestanding garage in Area 2, 284 spaces." Next slide, please. "We received feedback from some of the property owners at 4340 Von Carmen, the condo building, on the proximity of our freestanding garage to their building. This slide shows that the distance between buildings has been fixed at 114 feet from the closest point." Next slide, please. "In closing, I hope you agree that we, city staff and various community-based groups, took the time to create a project that combines the need for affordable housing with a design that is considerate of the feedback we received from those willing to collaborate. At this time, I'd like to introduce Tim Stanley, the president of Pasern Development, to walk you through our building and park designs, and in conjunction with our parking consultant, Tony Petros, our parking plan. Thank you."
Thank you, Ken. Mayor Avery and members of the council, before I present the architecture, I'd like to go back to the reason we're here. We're here to provide housing. This housing takes the form of an over $250 million investment in the city of Newport Beach and the Kohl Center. By comparison, in the, in the center, the largest building by square footage in this area by a factor of five is 5000 Birch Street, which was purchased by John Hancock in 2015 for $104.5 million. In addition to the substantial financial investment in the area, we're paying over $11 million in total fees in relation to this project, of which $6.5 million will be paid on an expedited basis upon the vesting of entitlement approvals we're seeking tonight. Tonight, we'll first briefly review the architecture for our proposed 312-unit Class A apartment building. We'll then take the time to review the one-acre public park we're creating, of which the combination of these elements can only be viewed as accretive to the surrounding area and to the city of Newport Beach. When I conclude, I'll turn the presentation over to Tony Petros of LSA to review our parking replacement plan, both during construction and in the long term. But first, the architecture, and just stay on the slide.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Could you give us some rough idea of the length of the presentations?
Well, I have, I'll tell you what. I will, I'll paraphrase as I go through this portion. Probably, my, my portion of the presentation is probably going to be another of four minutes, and then I'll turn it over to Tony Petros, and he has another five minutes.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. To present the architecture of the building, we're using computer-generated renderings to take you on a walking tour around the project. This is the elevation from Birch Street. You're seeing a perspective from the entrance to the Kohl Center from the, the public Birch Street. What you can note here is the scale of the structure in relation to 5000 Birch Street, which looms in the background, and it helps emphasize the point of the appropriate scale of the project in relation to other buildings. At the corner, you can see the building steps down, and this is where we plan on activating the space with a roof deck that'll be utilized by the residents. Next slide, please. "As we venture down the street between our building and the Hancock building, you can get a closer look at the enhanced materials on the project. Given that corners are an important, prominent part of the building, we highlight them using enhanced materials. In this case, it's an earth-toned colored stone material. And as we look further down the street, other materials and colors are used to articulate and break up the elevations and provide interest. On the garage facade, which is on the ground level only, we have openings with metal screening elements, but more importantly, as a part of the screening element, we're layering in landscape shrubs and trees in front of the building." Next slide, please. "As we move further down the street between the buildings, we have a view of the main entry to the project and the location of the business office. To grab the attention of the commercial or resident customer and provide a sense of arrival to the building, we utilize a two-story glass elevation for a striking appearance." Next slide, please. "Taking a closer view of the main entry, we've included a pedestrian entrance through the building to the public park in the rear, which we'll see a little bit later in the presentation. The design intent at the entry is to make it open and inviting for the public who may be coming home, parking for work, or visiting the public park." Next slide, please. "Finally, as we continue down the street and take a right turn, we arrive at the presentation of the building along Von Carmen Avenue, another important public street. Again, as a highly visible corner, we are applying enhanced stone materials to bring richness and texture. And also, of note, is our proposed one-acre public park to the left of the building. As you can see, this park will have frontage on Von Carmen." Next slide, please. "As mentioned previously in the presentation by Ken, the ideal, idea of a centralized park had its beginnings when the city approved the ICDP in 2010. Additionally, the prior applicant had created, the prior applicant had created a park that was not integrated into their development, which generated community feedback from the surrounding neighbors and what we took note of." Next slide, please. I'll go back. I'm sorry. Yeah. "As a result of this, our current project provides a public park that serves as a buffer between the residential building and its neighbors. Additionally, approximately half-mile jogging trails are included in a ring around the park and, and the development providing a connection to the Kohl Center and beyond. Taking a closer look at the programming of the park, which you can see is outlined in red, that's the dedication. The neighborhood park has been designed collaboratively with the city parks commission and staff, including active and includes active and passive amenities intended to appeal both to the residential and commercial users in the area. Our highlights of the program include a seated shade pavilion where people can sit outside and enjoy lunch, active recreational uses such as bocce and ping pong, as well as a dog park that's divided into two sections for both large and small dogs. Once again, connectivity to the Kohl Center and beyond was of concern in the design, so in addition to the pedestrian entrances along Von Carmen and Birch Street, we've included five 60-minute restricted parking spaces available to the public in front of the building." Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And this slide depicts the proposed project's connectivity to the external community. As previously noted in the presentation, the 2010 approval of the ICDP contemplated two master-plan areas that have pedestrian points of connection. While the approved second phase of Uptown Newport, which is on the right-hand side, has not yet been developed, our plan contemplates the connectivity between this park and a future park that's marked in red. And that's on the right -- that's the red asterisk on the right-hand side. The pedestrian connection is outlined in blue, and this will be a step towards completing a vision for the area conceived over a decade ago. Next slide, please. And for how the park would look, this is an interior perspective, as would be seen from the corner of the 4,910 Birch Building that's owned by Olin Properties. Next slide, please. Onto the parking replacement plan. Now, to address our plans for parking replacement, I'm going to turn over the presentation to Tony Petros of LSA. Founded in 1976, LA is a diversified environmental, community, planning, and transportation firm. The firm has extensive experience working with public agencies, commercial and mixed-use developments, recreational facilities and transportation projects. Their client list includes multiple cities and public agencies throughout California, including the City of Newport Beach. Tony is the President and Chief Operating Officer of LSA Associates. Prior to his executive appointment, he was Manager of Transportation for the firm, where he provided transportation planning and engineering services on major highway corridors and land developments, ports, and terminals. He's taught transportation planning principles at the University of California-Irvine, Cal State Fullerton, and the University of Southern California. Tony is Chair of the Advisory Board of the UC Masters of Irvine Public Policy Program and is a Board Member of the Livable Cities Lab. Tony?
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, Mayor Avery, members of the City Council. My name's Tony Petros, and yes, I'm a Principal with LSA managing the Mobility Group. Our firm conducted a parking accumulation study for the residences at 4,400 Von Karman, the results of which I'll share with momentarily. Before we dive into the study, though, I'd like to provide an overview of the parking replacement plan. The key takeaway from this plan is the fact that every parking space eliminated will be replaced with parking spaces that are equivalent in terms of convenience and improved in terms of quality. They will all be covered. With respect to the specifics of the plan, 546 spaces will be eliminated in areas around the site. We'll indicate where those are momentarily. 560 greater spaces will be provided in two new garage structures, 276 of which are in the dedicated office parking space within the apartment and office podium garage. 284 office spaces will be provided in a new freestanding garage in Areas 2 and 3 to the south of the 5,000 Birch Street building. The freestanding garage will be constructed prior to and advance of the starting of the apartment project in order to create additional parking inventory. I'd also like to highlight that the applicant has distributed these 560 new spaces relatively evenly between the two structures, given the results of our study, which I'll speak to on the next slide, which shows a higher utilization at peak demand times in the southern portion of the study area. Next slide. So in July of 2019, prior to COVID, we conducted a parking accumulation study using a third-party data collection company to identify the peak parking demand within this area of Cole Center. As shown in the table on this slide, we identified eight relevant areas with respect to the proposed area, the project area, including a total of 1,217 parking spaces. We conducted our survey over a week-long period from 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening. I'd like to note that we excluded Area 4, shaded in green to the south, and the existing parking structure, shaded in light blue, from our results summary because those stalls are not controlled by Cole or are not available for general office use. The results of our study provided a number of important data points as follows. No parking area exceeded capacity at any point in time. Average utilization across all the parking areas at peak demand times was only 63% of the capacity, leaving a residual capacity of 37% or 450 parking stalls. Average utilization at peak demand in the Area 7 comprising the site for the apartment was only 47% of the capacity, and the average utilization for -- at peak demand times for the remainder areas was only 70% of the capacity. The last two points clearly show that there is higher utilization of surface parking in the southern portion of the study area. This is why the applicant has allocated a higher percentage of the replacement parking in the freestanding garage, and also why the applicant will be building that in the first phase. In summary, based on our study and the data collected, we've concluded that the parking number that exists today is adequate to support the plan, including both the office and the residential uses. Additionally, significantly, Cole, as the administrator of the parking, has reviewed our analysis and plan and has accepted these findings. Next slide. As I mentioned earlier, in order to minimize disruption and ensure adequate office parking is available during construction of the project, the applicant plans to complete the construction of the freestanding garage prior to commencing the construction of the apartment project. Based on the studies we conducted in July of 2019, the total stalls available in all areas were 1,217, and at peak demand, only 767 of these stalls were being utilized. This leaves a residual capacity of 450 spaces. Next slide. The freestanding garage will be completed prior to starting construction of the apartment project in order to build additional parking inventory. Construction of the freestanding garage results in a permanent loss of 106 surface spaces, but the new structure will provide 284 spaces, resulting in a net increase of 176 spaces upon completion of the freestanding garage. As you can see from the summary chart on this slide, at completion, the freestanding garage, there will be a residual capacity of 626 spaces. Next slide. Upon commencement of construction of the apartment, approximately 440 surface stalls will be eliminated in Area 7, leaving a total capacity of 953. Based on our study, only 80% of the 760 -- only 80% or 767 of those stalls will be needed at the peak time. Continue. Let me conclude. At the end of the construction, all office parking will have been completely replaced. I'd reiterate the following key points. Every parking space eliminated will be replaced with parking that's equivalent in terms of convenience and improved in terms of quality. The plan, including the location of the garage and the allocation of parking spaces between the two structures, is supported by the data that we provided. The plan complies with all the applicable city parking standards we reviewed. The freestanding garage will be completed prior to starting construction in order to build additional inventory, and shuttle and valet service will be provided if needed to ameliorate any inconvenience during construction. Now, I'd like to turn the presentation back to Ken.
So in closing, we have the state mandated arena. This is the challenge. Governor Newsom has proposed in his 2021-2022 budget to enforce housing laws to ensure that cities approve the housing in their plans and not simply create paper housing. We are proud to be helping the city implement its housing plan. Thank you for listening. Sorry it took a little bit long. And we would like the opportunity to comment after the public comment or the opportunity to rebut, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we'll go to public comments. Three minutes, and if you're representing a group, we could do more time, depending on the group and how many you're representing. So we're now open for public comments.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. I'm not representing any group. I would note, near the beginning, Councilmember Dixon asked if the Planning Commission had reviewed the materials they would use in the construction. I wanted to note that for a major project like this, the Planning Commission traditionally has held a study session. In this case, they did not, and I know that at least one of the commissioners was frustrated that they had a very little time, less than a week, between the release of the staff report and having to make a recommendation to you on this project. As you've heard, it was also reviewed by the PBNR Commission, the park aspect of it. They actually reviewed it twice, one time last night, and I do not know what the outcome of that was, other than that they voted to recommend it. I don't know if they had any comments or suggestions to you. I have not seen those. I don't know if you have. I watched the Aviation Committee meeting, so I don't know what the outcome was. I knew earlier that they had concern about the five parking places that were supposed to be used for park visitors, and whether those are actually dedicated or merely public places that could be used by anyone, making access to the park rather difficult. Among the comments that you received before your last meeting, there were a couple of comments related to the park. One of them, I found interesting, it was pointing out a requirement in the general plan that the minimum one-acre park have a minimum dimension of 150 feet. In the response to comments on Page 38, it just says that this meets that requirement, but I think you should ponder a little more carefully what that requirement in the general plan means. Because if you take one acre of land, that's about 40,000 square feet. If you made a square, it would have to be 200 square -- 200 feet on a side to equal an acre. So it's mathematically impossible to have an acre without some dimension being at least 150 feet. So does it mean that all the dimensions need to be 150 feet? And if so, does this park meet that requirement? Also, in the general plan, it says the acreage is not supposed to include setbacks. Sounds like we've heard that the park is being used to create setbacks, so does it qualify I think that's pretty much what I wanted to say about this. I hope others will comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other comment from the community room?
My name is Adriana Forche. I have a PowerPoint, and the PowerPoint's based, actually, on the January 12 project that was submitted, but I'm going to change some of my comments today. And also, for you to know that I'm only going to go through Slide 6, because some of it is not applicable at this point. Mayor Avery and councilmembers, thank you for your consideration and time today. My name is Adriana Forche. Did you find the PowerPoint or not? That's not the -- is it the first slide, please? Slide 1? Thank you. Getting there. One more. We'd have to work with each other on this one. I think there's a first slide. It hasn't popped up yet? There we go. That's Slide 1. Before we begin, I did want to also make a comment that I had been working with about 28 stakeholders to submit a letter. We submitted a big letter to the City Council just yesterday, and we also had just had a meeting with the Pocern Group yesterday, too, so things are really fluid. But there are definitely -- that major letter had to do with concerns of unresolved issues with the whole project, but in my three minutes, I'm just going to focus narrowly on just the parking. Thank you. Again, so can I begin?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm a resident of Newport Beach, also an owner of 12 of the office condos in that 4,340 project, and I'm the President of the Von Karman Condo Owners Association. My slides are based on the project that was submitted on January 12, but basically, I'm urging the council to amend the resolutions and include some conditions of approval. Next slide, please. Access to parking during construction is going to be impacting the stakeholders, and also, it will violate the CCNRs. We had kind of discussed this yesterday in our meeting, but one option would be to require the coal company to resolve this issue, and I think it's a reasonable ask to require the coal company to lease spots in the 5,000 Birch parking structure at their expense, because there's this 265-stall deficiency issue. Next slide, please. This was the actual original location of the proposed garage. We are pleased with the supplemental memo that was submitted yesterday, and we would like to see that incorporated within the resolution. The council should ask the applicant to provide more detail, including elevations and material enhancement detail of the structure. Next slide. According to the application, the proposed garage functions to satisfy a city requirement and to provide a place to shuttle people during construction. So in many cases, as you can see by that arrow, this is an extreme distance, but which the existing garage, which is that John Hancock Building garage, would be better suited. Next slide. This next one is a video. It should launch. You can see this. All right. This is a visual representation from each floor of our building. We would like the applicant to provide this type of visual for the revised proposed garage. That was the original -- that would have been from the previous garage location. That's what it would have looked like right out our front door. Next slide. Again, this is -- this will be the last slide, and it's a video again, so just watch this one. The city has received numerous letters and comments on this project, as we're all aware, and it's reasonable to formalize the applicant's most recent memo as a condition of approval. However, the supplemental memo doesn't address enhancements in the materials. We would like to work with the applicant for a plan on landscaping, lighting, and visual screening as it pertains to the proposed parking structure. Likewise, a holistic parking plan should be a condition of approval. The project creates a 265-stall parking deficiency during construction, and the resolutions need to include contracting for the use of the existing garage -- sorry, one more second -- to reduce the number of shuttles and congestion. The City Council is wise to condition permits on conformance with the amended CCNRs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julie All, General Counsel for Olin Properties. Our national headquarters has been based in Newport Beach for over 30 years. Our 4,910 Birch Building is the property closest to and most impacted by this project. While this project has certain improvements over the three enormous condo towers that were previously proposed, there remains significant concerns that the applicant has not yet resolved. The council promised that any new residential would be compatibly integrated with existing offices, yet this project has numerous incompatibilities. We'd like to reiterate three key items tonight. The first, the setback from our building is not large enough. While the applicant's 11-hour -- 11th-hour setback change is an improvement, the proposed project is still extremely close to our building. The project comprises a very large five-story structure. For a building of such a substantial size, a normal setback would be 75 to 100 feet. The applicant's proposal falls far short of that. The proposed five-story apartment buildings are extremely close, less than 30 feet from our property line. Because of this, our building will receive the brunt of construction impacts from noise, congestion, dust, and debris. After construction, we will face permanent impact from such a large building being so close to our property. close to our property line. We are making very reasonable requests that the council require a larger setback than currently proposed by the applicant. Please put yourself in our shoes. If you own this building, you would most certainly feel that a current setback proposed by PRCERN is too small. We request that the council condition the project to require a minimum 75-foot setback from our building. We also request that the council carefully consider the setback needs of the buildings affected by the standalone parking structure. Another key issue we'd like to address is the parking deficit during construction. During Phase 2 of construction, which would be over two years, there will be a deficit of 265 parking stalls. This makes the Olin building and other buildings in the park noncompliant with both city codes and our rights granted under the CCNRs. We request that the council condition the project to require that there be no parking deficiency at any point during construction. Third and final item is the lack of retail in this project. The ICDP and the general plan have described new residential villages, including a retail component, which this project lacks entirely. The applicant instead proposes to replace retail with more density. The council should not allow this in the airport area, as the airport area is already deficient in amenities even prior to adding residents and their accompanying needs. We request that the council condition the project to require a small retail component, such as a cafe, be included. All three of these specific requests are reasonable, policy-based, and within council authority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jeff Willis, and I represent Olin Properties. I'm going to primarily focus today on the CQAs aspects and the CQAs failings of this document, but I heard something tonight that I don't think we've addressed, and so I want to make sure it's addressed. The project applicant tonight admitted there is no retail, no commercial aspect to this. That puts this entire project in violation of Newport Beach General Plan Policy 6.15.6. You're isolating services from the residents, you're creating a hole where residence goes, and that's in violation of that policy, among other general plan policies. The use of an addendum for CQAs in this case is wholly inappropriate. An addendum can only be used to correct minor technical issues. A 200-page document is not correcting minor technical issues. It shows that this requires an EIR period. The city has a stated policy that addenda should never be used for residential projects within the IBC. In 2008, in briefs filed by Newport after the general plan was filed, the city filed a statement that said, in their briefs, "Initially, Irvine prepared addenda to the IBC program environmental impact report for each project as a means of satisfying its obligations under CQAs. From 2001 to 2004, Irvine conducted environmental review in this matter for at least 11 residential and mixed-use projects in the IBC. Newport Beach objected to this practice, and Irvine stopped." Now, a few years later, suddenly Newport has this new policy that even though they have argued that you can't do this under CQAs, they did anyway. This does meet the subsequent EIR standard. Traffic issues. They used the wrong standard. Six months ago, the state adopted a standard that requires VMT, or vehicle miles traveled. This study used LOS, or level of service. Level of service measures waiting time at intersections. That is specifically prohibited now by state law. In addition, it also, the findings they found in the traffic study show that the traffic is in violation of the city's general plan. We've heard a few mentions of COVID tonight, but there's not a word in the addendum about COVID. COVID has tripled lumber cost. COVID has increased and made unstable the workforce. COVID has rippled through the entire economy, and yet, there's not a word of it. Understand, COVID is not an environmental impact, but it worsens and makes them significant. It's definitely new information that triggers the requirement for a supplemental or subsequent EIR. GHG was not required to be studied when the greenhouse gases was not required to be studied in 2006, when the city adopted its general plan. Applicant ignores it, blows right past it. The cases they cite are completely inapplicable. One was an exemption case, and one was a case where an EIR was being prepared for that project. None of their cases are on point. The addendum is fatally defective for these exact same reasons, and I request the city deny the project on that basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I have a PowerPoint. It's titled 4340, and my name is Fred Forché. Mayor Avery and members of the council. I'm Fred Forché, an owner of 4340 Von Karman and CEO of BitCentral, which has occupied the fourth floor for over 10 years. What if a homeowners' association sold off a park to a developer and pocketed the money? And they did not tell the homeowners they were doing this. Do you think the homeowners would be upset? That's the kind of situation we have here in Coal Center, and the building owners are pretty upset with Coal. The project is going against many of the existing CCNRs in our office park, which was never intended to have residential development. In considering approval for this project, the city is taking away existing private property rights while simultaneously giving new rights to a new property owner, and this is simply wrong. Next slide, please. The proposed development imposes significant financial impacts on our private property, starting with our views. This development will negatively impact the building owner's ability to lease available office space with over three years of heavy construction, noise, congestion, and deficient parking. Next slide, please. I guess one prior to that. Okay, somehow it skipped over. There is a 265-stall parking deficiency for over two years during construction, and this would make this project noncompliant with the parking code and the CCNRs, and a shuttle to get to our office is not an acceptable option. There should be a parking allocation study which reflects the number of stalls allocated to each business based upon its square footage. We are currently allocated 3.16 spaces per 1,000 square feet of office space, and ran out of parking on October of 2019 and could not obtain more. Office space with open floor plans needs four spaces per 1,000 square feet, not the current 3.16, which was left over from the 1970s, when these buildings had mostly private offices. Coal needs to provide building owners with parking to the current city code of four spaces per 1,000 feet. Next slide, please. And one past that. Okay. The proposed standalone parking structure is next to the BitCentral building at 4340 and is located a football field length away from the 5,000 birch building entrance and over two football fields away from the 4440 and 4910 buildings. This is an unreasonable distance for tenants to walk and will impair the effective building's marketability. And moving the garage a little further away and making it taller is really just a trade-off. It still really imposes upon our building and the views from our building. The Coal Association has a fiduciary responsibility to protect the property rights of the building owners who they are supposed to be serving. We would like the city to instruct Coal to address the property owner's significant concerns before voting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the city council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Bill Solomon-Dreckus. I'm the president of Affordable Housing Access. We're a 501(c)(3) here in Newport Beach, and our mission is the creation and preservation of affordable housing. You're looking at a project here that creates over 300 units of new housing in Newport Beach, and so far, we're not doing so great in terms of creating housing. We're facing a looming RENA requirement of over 4,000 units. And frankly, although my organization's function is primarily oriented to creating affordable housing, every unit of housing we create helps stabilize a housing market in California that is crushed. So this is a project that's very thoughtful, very clever, very high-quality. It's an infill development with a balance of density, open space, that takes what I would call underutilized commercial property and builds it into a thriving live-work community. I know people have their concerns about their individual interests, but I would be surprised if in five years, all the adjacent owners don't see vastly increased property values as a result of this redevelopment. So what I see in this project is a model, a model for additional infill development, and we hope, as a local nonprofit, to work with the city to help identify the subsidy sources that would be required to do more projects like it with greater affordability components, because this is what the city needs. This is what the state needs. Otherwise, we're not meeting our growth expectations or the needs of our future community members. Thank you.
Do we have another speaker?
Good evening. My name is Bradley Lofgren. I'm a principal with the real estate investment and advisory firm Peregrin Realty Partners. We are headquartered in Newport Beach and currently own and manage 2 million square feet of office and industrial properties, mostly located in the state of California. I've been involved with commercial real estate for 30 years. Prior to forming Peregrin in 2009, I worked at both CBRE, Cushman, and Wakefield in the valuation and advisory services divisions. I hold licenses as a state-certified general appraiser in both California and Hawaii. I am also a member of the Appraisal Institute, which is commonly referred to as an MAI. I was hired by the PRCERN group to review the development plan of the residences at 4400 Von Karman and determine the impact that the project would have on the adjacent office buildings. Start by saying this is a somewhat unique project in that it is an infill reuse project. There aren't a lot of projects that have gone through this, although it seems to be coming more the norm with the lack of available sites that we're going through. To start with, what I did was I tried to get an understanding from the perspective of the real estate professionals in the market. I spoke to representatives from Lincoln Property Company, CBRE, JLL, and Orion. They were all familiar with this project. They all indicated that the adjacent office buildings would be impacted during the construction of the project. However, that post-construction, they all saw this as a development that would be a positive for the neighborhood. I've researched a number of similar, again, not exact, situations where apartment buildings were developed adjacent to office buildings. What you generally see is that rent growth trailed market during the construction period, but increased in excess of market after construction. I have specific experience in this. Peregrin owned two Class A office buildings in Glendale, California on Central Avenue. Central Avenue was historically a secondary location for office tenants as compared to Brand Boulevard. During our ownership, multiple apartment buildings were constructed on Central Avenue, including one immediately adjacent to our office building. These were very accretive to our projects. Both of the buildings had lease-up issues, and having the available apartments and the amenities that the apartments brought changed the whole perception of being located on Central Avenue. Again, let me be clear, the residents at 4400 Von Karman are different from the projects in Glendale and the other projects we analyzed, primarily because they're being built in a surface parking lot that is used by existing office tenants. The loss of this parking area during construction will affect the desirability of the immediately adjacent office buildings. Once completed, however, the residents at 4400 will include the park and active amenities and will likely be used primarily by business park employees and neighbors. In conclusion, this is going to be an accretive project to the value of these office buildings in the long run.
All right, do we have any more public comment? Anything on the phone? We've got seven phone calls. Hello, please mute your device. Hello, please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alex Tolda, and I represent the owners of 4440 Von Karman.
Go ahead.
And there are a few items, I think. The project is consistent with the city's general plan, which specifically identified the Coal Center property as ideal location for new housing in the airport area. Secondly, the city council unanimously approved the Coal-Connecton Integrated Conceptual Development Plan in September 2010, which provided a framework for developing this site with high-density housing. The proposed project fulfills the goals of the Coal-Connecton ICDP. Third, the project provides both market-weight and affordable housing that is drastically needed in Newport Beach. The project provides housing in close proximity to the airport area and public transportation, which will result in less reliance on automobiles for commuting. Also, the project will transform that star parking lot and will make it into a vibrant mixed-use environment with public park, new landscaping, and new residents. And finally, as a future neighbor, I look forward to the amenities with the campus-like feel. Thank you for your time.
Hello, please mute your device.
Hi, yeah, I did. Go ahead.
Yes. All right, please proceed. Go ahead.
Proceed with what? Is the guy still talking?
All right, go ahead, please.
My name's Paul Fruchbaum.
All right. We're listening.
Am I on the?
Yes.
Phone? Okay. My name's Paul Fruchbaum. I'm a principal with KDF Communities, and that's a developer of affordable housing in Newport Beach. We've been in Newport for 25 years. As the council members know, I'm also a member of the Housing Update Advisory Committee, and I'm on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. As a developer of affordable housing in California, I think this project is exactly what the city needs and will help us substantially meet our RENA requirements of over 4,000 units. This is a very creative infill project, meets the city requirements, very difficult to put together a project like this and design it to meet the requirements of so many stakeholders. I would urge the city to approve this project. I think if it's not approved, our chances of making any headway under our RENA requirements are very, very low. I'd like to commend the PRCERN group for a creative, well-thought-out project and meeting literally most of the demands of the local stakeholders and pretty much all of the demands of what the city needs in a project like this. So I would urge you to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Hello, please mute your device. Go ahead. You're on.
Myself?
Yes. Please go ahead.
My name's Larry. I, my family, 4490 Von Karman, which is on the campus. We heard of We heard about this project a bunch of years ago, and this is a major investment for our company. We don't own other buildings. We were first very skeptical about the parking, and we got satisfied there of they're going to replace the parking and, of course, the disruption during the building. And, of course, we had just finished a big, you know, renovation of the, of the building that we bought, and we created a lot of disruption, so we understand that happens. And again, even when you're in houses, people next door build and stuff like that, so we overcame that. We got so excited about the park. There's nowhere for our tenants or our staff to be able to go sit somewhere or be able to enjoy a park. There's nowhere around there for them to just get out of the office and get some time. And it's always been very upsetting that there's nowhere to walk to where you can just sit and you can enjoy a park. So when we presented this to our employees, they were extremely, extremely excited about it. The other thing is, you know, as a business owner, is the recruiting and retention of employees. Because of the lack of different options within Newport Beach and even the adjacent cities, we've had a lot of trouble retaining people. Because in today's day and age, people want to live where they work, they want to be able to go home for lunch, they want to be able to be close to daycare, they want to go home and spend time with their pets. And so recruiting people who eventually wind up wanting to live where they work has been very hard because of the lack of options. And so when we see these projects come up, I get very excited because I see it as retention of staff, which is, has not, was not the case. And I think that seeing Newport Beach prove more of these projects so that people can live where they work, because I'm losing people because they want to live somewhere else. And not, I don't think it's as much affordability because we're willing to pay the higher money, it's more because of the options. So we love this option and we love other options that are like it. And I hear that, you know, hey, it's a traffic issue and, and all that when people talk to me about Newport Beach. And I just think about it, we've got all these people coming from other cities because they don't have options here. They're still driving here, they're driving back, they're spending most of their money in other cities. I, I just don't see a reason why there's more housing and why there's not more of these projects to support people that are paying the tax.
Thank you, Paul, very much for your comments. Hello, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Nicole Christ. I'm with TerraNova Planning, representing Olin Properties. We submitted a letter to you with a comprehensive land use and environmental analysis of the project, which is in the record from your previous meetings. Tonight, I'd like to focus on two issues. The first is general plan consistency. The airport area in the general plan has an unconditional 2,200-unit cap. The city has already approved 2,038 units. This site, in both the housing element and the land use element, is assigned 260 units. And as a result, the city is approving a project that, that will exceed the general plan cap. That, along with policies relating to park and the size of projects, makes this project inconsistent with the general plan without processing of a general plan amendment. The need for the cap is clear when one looks at the general plan traffic analysis. In that document, as analyzed in the addendum that was prepared, there were only 128 apartment units allocated in the TAS in which the project is located. And so an analysis, the analysis for this project had to add 184 units for general plan build-out. Under those conditions, there are three intersections studied that exceed the city's own standard for a significant impact on, for traffic, which is cited in the addendum and in the traffic study as being an increase of 1%, which is a VC increase of 0.10 or more in the ICU. As a result, the impacts associated with traffic cannot be covered in an addendum because a significant impact occurs, a general plan build-out, and the addendum is not the appropriate document for the, for the city to consider. Since the city cannot adopt the addendum, and SEQA must occur, approval must occur prior to project approval, and since the project is not consistent with the general plan, we would advise that the city cannot approve the project this evening and ask that you rectify the SEQA issues and general plan issues prior to considering the project again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have another caller. Please go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Elizabeth Hansberg. I'm with People for Housing OC. We submitted a letter in support of this project. We represent the grassroots, yes-in-my-backyard movement of Orange County residents that are concerned about the housing shortage, and we have bounded together to organize and to represent the voices of the people that will live in this future house. I want to echo the comments of the previous project supporters, particularly the speaker just before the last one. This project does bring a lot of amenities to the existing business park, but the most important thing that this project does is that it reuses commercial space, which in the Orange County Business Council's housing scorecard, they said that the best place for new housing development is going to be reusing our commercial spaces. Cities that are older do struggle to find a place for new housing. And so in the redevelopment of the airport area, the city itself decided that this was an appropriate place for housing. This is now the second iteration of this project that has attempted to bring housing to the coal center in keeping and consistent with the plan that the city identified for it. And so we need to go ahead and approve it because those plans don't mean anything and they don't help us end our housing shortage and solve our, our problem if we don't implement them. And so this project implements that plan, and so for that reason alone, it should move forward. I just also wanted to mention, I know that there is some tension about, you know, traffic and about other, you know, the impact that it's going to have on other neighboring office owners. And I guess to refer back to one of the earlier speakers who said, you know, how would you feel if you're, you know, if you were in your HOA and the HOA did something and sold something? I mean, this isn't that different than like if your next-door neighbor comes and says, "I'm going to put a second story on my house," and when they go to the planning commission, you know, the neighbor comes out and says, "Well, he shouldn't be able to just because I don't want him to." If it was within his rights to do it, it's not on the city to say, "No, you can't," just because, you know, the neighbor doesn't like it. And so if we listen to the NIMBYism, and it is an unusual situation because they're, they aren't homeowners necessarily, but, you know, the biggest barrier, one of the biggest barriers, I think it is the biggest barrier to building new housing, is NIMBYism. And so in this way, if you let the naysayers get in the way of implementing the plan that the city has, you know, has approved for itself about where it wants to put housing, that's NIMBYism, and you're, and you're getting into NIMBYism and, and stopping your own plan from moving forward. So for that reason, and for the housing shortage, and for the fact that it reuses commercial property and is an infill project, you should approve this project. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Emery, and members of City Council. This is Dwight Beldon. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for you tonight. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Can you hear okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, good, all right, thank you. Hey, I appreciate the opportunity to speak for, before you tonight, especially some of the earlier agenda items on the city parking and the restaurants, really important issue items that we all need to talk about. And thank God you guys are bringing that up for the benefit and help a lot of the restaurants. In this particular case, I am a resident and owner of a portion of the property at 4340 Von Karman. We've been there for 10 years. I started my career in 1980 at the 4,000 MacArthur Building, and I've been a developer for over 40 years. When the planning commission first approved this project, we had grave concerns over the placement of the parking structure. And I'd like to commend the Pacer Group for reaching out, spending time with us, listening to what our concerns were, and the, the plans and the supplemental memo, I think, address a lot of our concerns. I, I think we still need to talk about elevations, we need to talk about some landscaping, some other things to, to help soften the impact of, of the huge new structure, but we're moving in a good direction. You've heard concerns tonight about SEQA, you've heard concerns tonight about CCNRs. Those don't necessarily affect what Pacer's trying to do, but really where, where the coal company and selling this property, I think, has abdicated some of their responsibility under the CCNRs as their fiduciary to us as owners of that association. And that's a, a private matter that, that we'll, we'll need to discuss with them at a later date. Now, in terms of the project itself, I commend the Pacer Group and what they've done in terms of listening to us. I was not in a position to approve, but the planning commission approved back in November. But based on what we see moving forward, we're, we're excited with the direction and the, and the intent of them working with us to, to fix what we felt was a, a real problem with the parking structure. So I, I would like to just kind of end by saying, we, we'd like to make sure that, that the city has a, a direction to the project proponent, to work with the neighbors to make sure they, they address the concern, because this is a project that is, was never planned to, to be this way. When you go back to Section 1.02 of the CCNR that Don Cole wrote, he was looking for harmonious development. We've all struggled with that, with what that means. And when we found out what, what the project was, was going to be, it certainly wasn't harmonious with, with our property, and we all feel that the project has the potential for diminishing the value of our ownership of the properties we have. So I just want to say that we really appreciate what Pacer has done in reaching out, and we look forward.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, please mute your device and go ahead.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Brad Emery and members of the Newport Beach Council. My name is Michael Costa, and I am president of Highwoods Costa Development Company that focuses on the development of affordable housing throughout California. We have upwards of about 30,000 units that we've developed so far. I've known Ken Pacer and the Pacer Group for upwards of about 30 years and had many, many conversations about how we might address issues that concern the development of affordable housing and producing more of it, because obviously it's something that is in great need throughout this state and especially in the city of Newport Beach. I commend Pacer for really, I think, addressing most every concern that most of the neighbors have, have brought forth, reducing the size of the buildings, creating upwards of an acre of green space, park space in front of the building, which is something you really don't see that often when you, when you're looking at urban infill type of developments. And those, these are costly items that go into developing projects like this. And most importantly, I commend Ken and his team for utilizing a density bonus, which actually puts the project in full conformance with the general plan amendment at Newport Beach, because this is a state bonus plan that allows you to increase the density of the project and, in return, deliver affordable housing units. So what we have here, as you know, is 13 units of affordable housing that will be utilized by residents whose median incomes are at 50% of the area median income or above. These are very costly units to develop, especially being able to put them in such a high-end, beautiful project as such as this one here. Most affordable housing households don't really get the opportunity that's being presented here. And so I want to commend both the city and the Pacer Group for going down this path. And as Ken mentioned during his presentation, I recall him saying that these costs rise upwards of about $1 million a unit, and that density bonus really only offsets about $400,000 per unit of that. So there's a cost that is being put into this project to be able to not only meet from a Reno standpoint, the market rate apartments that are needed, but also the affordable units that are needed, greatly needed in the city of Newport Beach. And so I urge the City Council to approve this opportunity. I think it's very well-designed from having, you know, developed many apartment communities myself. I know the Pacer Group pretty well. They're very, very good owners, they're very conscientious owners. They're long-term owners, and that makes a big difference. It's the only, only a long-term owner really could make a play like this, because to get the return back for providing those 13 units even, it takes a while to earn that back out. And so I want to commend them for taking this on.
Well, thank you for your comments. That's it. All right, at this time, I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to address some of the comments made and rebut any items they choose to inform us on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jennifer Hernandez. I am, my license plate is SEQUA-NERD. I am a lawyer representing the applicant, and in particular, wanted to first commend the quality of the analysis, comprehensive analysis was done under the California Environmental Quality Act by the city staff, and I want to make three quick points. Point number one is this project implements what was already approved by this council and your predecessors, of course, more than 10 years ago with your general plan amendment and then the ICVP. It is not going to be possible to develop housing if we can't implement plans, if we have to relitigate literally each new housing approval based on whether or not the plan was a good idea in the first place. To our knowledge, none of those currently objecting to this project voiced their objections in a timely way to either the general plan or the ICVP. Next, it would be very convenient, but it would not be constitutional, politically convenient perhaps, but not constitutional, for the council to say, "Satisfy your neighbors, and then you can go ahead." That is an unlawful delegation of regulatory authority, which is expressly prohibited in several court cases, including U.S. Supreme Court cases, in the zoning context. It's just not an authorized use of public regulatory authority to give private parties like neighbors veto or approval or conditional approval authority over a project. The case citations for that are in the materials. That's why outreach is so important. That's why it was so critical to continuously engage with folks and try... important. That's why it was so critical to continuously engage with folks and try to address their concerns. It's impossible to achieve unanimity. But you've heard both supporters and those who apparently like the current view of the surface parking lot. It is what it is. We all have our preferences. But we urge this City Council to implement the plan and not delay it or condition, or to try to condition it on achieving unanimous approval by neighboring owners and tenants. Finally, I wanted to make a quick point on the addendum criticism. An addendum to an EIR in Sequa is used to answer one critical question. Will the project that is under consideration cause significant new or significantly worse impacts than those identified in the earlier EIR? The EIR for your general plan looked at twice as many housing units as what the general plan ultimately identified as a base, not a cap. I leave to the city, of course, to address their own city general plan in more detail. But as a lawyer who does Sequa for a living, the key to Sequa these days is to prove the negative. Does the project cause a significant new impact that wasn't already addressed or was worse than what was addressed? Proving the negative for now what's almost 100 different questions in Sequa requires some pages. It requires some technical reports. It requires careful and thoughtful analysis of each of those topics. And the fact that that takes 200 pages is the fact of your own city staff and consultants' expertise and diligence. There is nothing in Sequa to suggest that it is limited to, quote, "small technical changes." Quite the contrary. Finally, a further issue is, is the new or worse impact something that could not have been known when the original EIR was approved? The cases on greenhouse gas, the cases on VMT, or the statute, and now regulation on VMT are very clearly explained by your team, and I'm sure they'll address them further. But that simply does not invalidate the use of addenda. We've used addenda for 10-plus-year-old projects, 20 years' worth of airport development, 10, 11, 12, 15 addenda. The fact that Newport Beach at one point didn't like the city of Irvine's use of an addenda is simply not material. In this city, for this area, you have used addenda completely appropriately, and I think the record is very, very clear, very, very strong. You've made sure to do the right legal thing and analysis for this project. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other speakers? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais and for council comments.
It might be good, just briefly, to have staff, if they have any additional comments they want to make in response to the issues that were raised.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'll go ahead. I did hear a couple of comments about the general plan, questioning its consistency. I think Mr. Moser indicated that the park didn't meet the 150-foot standard. That is a general plan policy. The park actually has 150, more than 150-foot dimension on Von Carmen. It's also more than 150 feet deep, you know, through the linear part of the park. It is more linear than I think we anticipated, but it does meet that standard. I also heard a concern about it being inconsistent with the general plan policy because there was some lack of retail space in there. The general plan doesn't mandate any retail space to be in here. The actual designation for this is a mixed-use horizontal, which allows for the horizontal intermixing of uses. It also allows for the vertical intermixing if there were to be retail in this facility, but it's not mandated. I heard a concern about the general plan in terms of its density. We do have a limit of 2,200 units in the airport area, but I think, as you heard from other speakers, we have the density bonus provisions. This is where the state requires the city to accept additional density above and beyond its general plan and zoning to accommodate affordable housing construction. And so, you know, while the general plan does specify a limit here, you know, allowing additional units above and beyond that is fully consistent with state law and inconsistent with our own municipal code, which implements the density law bonus provisions. So we don't feel that that's an inconsistency with the general plan. I heard one other comment about the general plan in that it was, that the site wasn't large enough. I'm not entirely sure I understood the comment. Maybe it's not large enough and inconsistent. Now, the general plan does require these 10-acre villages to be created. This is the 13-acre project site, so it meets that standard. And the density that's provided here also meets the minimum and maximum densities of the general plan. So with that, I didn't hear any other issues that related to general plan consistency, but we do feel it is consistent with all the general plan policies.
Great. Thank you.
And just briefly, in regards to Sequa, I don't know if you want your consultants to weigh in on any of the issues that were raised, but I thought the response to correspondence that was put together did a really good job of responding to most of the issues that were raised this evening. You know, one question that's come up is whether an addendum is appropriate. And in general, an addendum is appropriate if there isn't new information or changed circumstances that require you to do additional environmental analysis. I didn't hear anything tonight related to the vehicle miles traveled analysis or anything else that would constitute new information or changed circumstances that would require additional environmental analysis. I just wanted to make that point. And I don't know if you have any other additional points you want your Sequa consultants to weigh in on.
Well, we do have Kimberly Horn. Dana Privet is here if there's any additional questions. And I wasn't necessarily going to turn over the presentation to her to do that, but I think we're pretty well-covered.
Jim, I think, I think let's just, if we can bring Dana on the screen here on the Zoom call, see if she had any comments that she wanted to add for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Emery and members of the City Council and the public. I think Jim and Erin have done a great job of going over this, and we feel very comfortable that the analysis that was done looked at and evaluated the project compared to existing conditions, and then looked at whether or not it was consistent with the findings of the general plan. And as Ms. Hernandez mentioned, is the, the test is whether or not the findings for a project, and the project can be substantively different than even a project that was previously approved, results in new significant impacts or substantial increase in significant impacts. And we did not find that was the case. And all of the topics that are in the city's existing Sequa checklist were addressed, and it clearly goes through all of those topical areas, even though some of those areas were not necessarily called out specifically as a topical area in the city's general plan EIR. Specifically, there have been several comments that were made that we did not do a greenhouse gas analysis. That is absolutely incorrect. There is a full analysis, even though it was noted that the general plan at the time did not do one, nor was required to do that. But that's factually incorrect that it was not included in this addendum. There was comments also made that the traffic analysis used the wrong methodology, which is not correct under the requirements of an addendum, or that the project also has substantial new traffic impacts. The analysis shows that is not the case when compared to existing conditions, as well as project build-out, and when compared to the general I think those were the primary issues that we saw when we were going through and reviewing the comments that came up. And I agree with Mr. Harp that there was no new information that was raised after we put together and with the assistance of the city, the responses to this, or issues that were raised during this City Council hearing tonight. Thank you, and I'd be happy to address any more comments you may have or questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Start with Mr. Muldoon. All right. Good. So bring back the council. Go ahead, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Yes, for those of you who spoke, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm essentially a property rights advocate. I would never tell someone that their project should be changed. I do think that the changes that were made are quite impressive, especially considering the prior applicants. And I think it's very aesthetically pleasing, and the density is very considerate of the neighbors. And I personally like the project, but that's not really why I'm here. I'm here just to vote on property rights and to support those projects that fit within the parameters of the city and state law. So for that reason, I'm going to move staff's item.
I'll second it.
First, I'd like to, given that, from the Planning Commission and the time that's elapsed, and the, at that time after the Planning Commission, there are some issues that related far apart between the applicant and the property owners, adjacent property owners. And I think that that gap has narrowed considerably. So I commend the Presern Group and their team for meeting with the community groups and the stakeholders of the property. So I think, if I understand, the reconciliation of these disparate issues is, and our attorneys have addressed the Sequa issue, so I'll obviously put that aside. But the parking structure, as we heard tonight, that the parking structure has now been, in the last month, I guess it's been flipped, and footprint has been reduced, the height has gone up a little bit. So it has addressed significantly the concerns of the stakeholders, which I think is commendable. I think maybe one of the issues that remains to be addressed, and it's a temporary issue, is the parking. While there's adequate parking, been identified, as we've heard during the construction period, it seems to not meet the desired goals of the various neighbors, stakeholders, business occupants, that the walk is too far or whatever. I just hope, maybe there could be a better explanation by Presern to these stakeholders, that there's a shuttle bus, valet service. I think Presern has clearly bent over backwards to try to accommodate these needs and the temporary period of construction. So I hope they can continue to work that out. Also, I hope, I don't know if this is necessarily a condition, I say it publicly, that the parking structure can be addressed and enhanced with some landscaping amenities, such as what our parking structure looks like out here. You don't even know it's a parking structure because the wall of landscaping greenery, it really obstructs or obscures the fact that it's a parking structure. I think that may be an enhancement that the Presern Group could consider. But I really want to commend both, all parties to have worked together. I guess I have an overall question with the detail of these questions and the reconciliation of these matters and the Sequa issues. Did the Planning Commission consider all these challenges? I mean, it's quite a lot of technical detail, which I don't mind as a council sitting on it, but shouldn't have this been, had been, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this project, were these same issues presented on Sequa and, and general plan, and the commercial, retail, absence of, was that all considered at the Planning Commission? And what, did they have a point of view on any of this?
Thank you, Councilmember Dixon. The, there was a lot of public comment that was provided to the Planning Commission. You know, as the questions come up, staff answered those questions. Not, it didn't come up, I think, in detail as this evening. But the, when the questions do come up, staff is available to answer those questions. And I don't think we got into this level of detail on the Sequa side, though.
Just to follow up on the point about commercial retail, could someone tell me what, how far is the nearest grocery store?
Mr. Campbell or Ms. Rosalyn, either of you know?
I believe the closest. And maybe the applicant might have a better answer for this, but I know there is a Mother's Market up at MacArthur, and I'm sorry, Jamboree and Michelson. That may be the closest one. The other one would be in Irvine or East Bluff would be the closest one in Newport Beach.
So, okay, I think we all know in our housing element discussions, and that the airport area is such a fundamental part of our future of our, and to meet the RENA requirements as much as we possibly can. There's going to be a lot of residential construction housing in this area. That is a good thing. We do need to work on some, and I don't know, we're not going to go through the general plan for another year or two, I suppose, but the amenities to serve a residential population, I think, are in dire need.
And our goal is to include that discussion in the land use element update later this year.
All right. But we're still a ways away from that. But I guess I will say, as for future projects that are going to be coming into this area, let's be mindful. We're putting thousands of people in this area, and the nearest grocery store is not that near. But I, too, support this project. I commend all parties for working together. I do, I want to comment on the introductory to the Presern Group as a company, and commend them and thank them and express my appreciation, because I see the evidence of the shop-off, now it's called Uptown Newport, that Presern has taken over, the quality of the construction. I asked the question earlier about material quality. I see evidence of high-level material quality, even their affordable units. I think they're affordable units in Uptown. And you would not discern that from the exterior, and so they make those accommodations on the interior. Their, Uptown Newport is absolute quality. This is going to be the same as I understand it to be. And I commend any developer coming into the city, especially providing affordable, to use, to see what Presern does by combining market rate units as well as affordable. And the average person walking by would not know the difference. And I think that's a credit to Presern. It's, it's a benefit to the city of Newport Beach. And we, as we go forward with our 4,000 units to come, I would hope that the Presern can be a model to others of the kind of development that we want to see in Newport Beach in terms of quality, construction and materials and amenities to support those residential units. Thank you.
Mr. Blom.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo Mayor Protem Muldoon, and this is a great project, I think, for a number of reasons. And I'm a huge proponent for the airport district as a whole. And to speak to Councilmember Dixon's point, we do need more things there. And you are 100% right. And those things come by getting developments like this in place, because then we can see people that want to show up and build those elements within these districts. Right now, we have a district that is, it's struggling. And that's what I see. I, you know, I spoke with both parties, and then I went and spent about three days wandering through the district, hanging out at the lake that no one goes to, being right beneath the condos. I do go to Pacific Club often. I'm not a member like Will, so I didn't have to remove myself from this. But in the end, I saw an area of Newport that doesn't feel that much like Newport. It feels like a district removed from who we are. And in the end, I think that the staff has done a commendable job on getting this to be an area of Newport, and bringing it into the fold of what is we're looking for as a city. And so, you know, my thanks go out to our staff for a comprehensive analysis of this. Well done. The Presern Group did a great job. And I've spoken with the folks that didn't approve or didn't want this project as well. And I've, I've said the same thing to them. What do you want? What are we looking for here? And the answer has been really silence. It's been, well, we want a better project. We want X, Y, and Z. And in the end of the day, I think we, we can't always ask for better. We have to ask for a starting point, something that helps create the community we're looking to build. And I think we're in a great point right now to start building that community in the airport district, and it'll build on top of itself. So, thank you, everyone. I mean, I'm in full support of this project. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
I just wanted to add that I was part of a discussion between some spawn representatives and the Pocern group and Melanie Schlatterback, and we were asking about the lack of grocery stores and retail in the area, and it came down to a discussion about which comes first, the chicken or the egg? And it really boiled down to that as soon as we get more residents in the area, there will be, there was even a discussion of a particular property that could possibly be a market, and that will come as soon as we get more residents in the area that will utilize that market. So I, I feel confident that that will be resolved down the line. And I just wanted to echo what Diane had said about appreciation for actually all parties involved here, because the advocates and the proponents and the ones who are opposed to it, they all have done a great job of reaching out to us, of explaining their product and the opposition, and they've done it respectfully, and they've done it over time so that we actually had time to absorb all the, this is a complex project, and we had time to absorb what they were saying, the objections. We talked to staff. We had, I've never felt so prepared to vote on a project in my two years on council because this has been an exhaustive process, and I know everyone's not going to be happy, but I am appreciative of all the efforts. And I think it's, it serves as an example for future developments of how much time and energy you really need to put into a project and educating the council, the planning commission, the, the community members, so that when we get to this point, we don't feel like we're trying to approve something without adequate information. So I think, I think this is an admirable project and that we will be happy down the line.
Thank you. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I agree with everyone up here. I would point out that I'm grateful that staff took the time to work so hard with Ken and, or Mr. Pocern and his group. They're quite a, quite a group. So, but you guys really, working together, were able to capture what, what this end result is. And certainly as a vote builder, I, I don't follow much of it, but I, I've, I listened closely and I, I've seen the project. It is just a fantastic thing. But again, it's you guys working with this outfit, making it come to life, which otherwise wouldn't. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is, this is our housing future, and it reflects, you know, the, as one of the speakers said, you know, infield development, which is the way these things are going to get done. And, you know, during our meetings a year or two years ago, I'm losing track of time for the general plan update, we got groups together in each district and had people look at the entire map of the city and then put little Legos on places where housing could go, and a lot of it, because we're under the gun to produce a lot of housing. And of course, the airport area is one of those places, and West Newport's one of those places, and Newport Center is one of those places, that at least residents, you know, felt that would be appropriate. And so this makes, this makes sense. And I think for, you know, for many of us that have lived here a long time, and even, it doesn't matter who you are, you know, we have a concept of Newport. To Mr. Blom's point, there's a consistency, we've got all these different villages, but there's this consistency that there's just, there's good development, and it's, and it's all different. You know, all our communities are different. And this village that is being created up there by this really first start and some other things that are in the pipeline will be its own village. It'll be different than Toronto Del Mar. But nonetheless, I agree completely with Mr. Blom. You, we've, we've got to, we've got to have people there. It's a chicken and egg thing, to Ms. Brenner's point. And then demand will be there for services, demand will be there for markets, and, and we've got to seed that demand with, with some, with some zoning and figuring out places for this to exist. And that will really light it off because this is the beginning. And for those of us that have been here a long time, it's, it's, it sort of pulls you back a little bit, the scale of it. But if you've been reading the news, you've been paying attention, we're in a new world here in California in terms of housing, and every city's got this problem, and we're very fortunate to have a developer, I think, that, because we've seen our share of subpar developers, and this is not it. This is a quality developer that's doing a good project and is working with, you know, as we've heard tonight, has worked with everyone. Do we, do we have totals, total agreement? No, we don't. But I think in general, as we've heard from the rest of the council members, this is a good project. It's what we need. It's what California needs, what, is what the city needs. We're just going to have, we're going to, we're working our way toward a denser future. And, but at least this city, I believe, is doing a better job, and I'm sure it'll be borne out in the years ahead than most, if not all of them. It's, it's exceptional. So we've got a good thing here, and I'm, I'm very appreciative of all the work of staff and the planning commission, council, everybody. It's a long road, and the applicant, I thought, did a very good job in presenting their project, and it is the, it's the model going forward unless there's some giant change in population numbers in California, but I don't think that'll be the case. We're always going to be growing and moving. So I think we did have a motion.
Mayor, Mayor Avery, Mayor Avery. If Mayor Protam Muldoon can amend the motion and include the design revisions that were submitted.
Abby, too.
Right. Okay, Ms. Dixon.
I neglected to say one thing in all these accolades we're giving to the Pocern group, but just to take us all back to remember the importance of community, because as was shown in the Pocern presentation, the original project three years ago was going to be three 14-story buildings? Was it 14 or 17, 14, something like that?
13, yeah.
And the community rose up. And sitting up here, we certainly heard from the community and the developer heard from the community, and Pocern and Shopoff were part, were partners in this. And here today, we're sitting with a beautiful project that reflects the input from this community. So the community does let us hear their point of view on development, not only in coastal zones, but also in the airport area. And I want to give a shout out to our community to stay engaged and just a little commercial for our housing element work that staff is spearheading. It's really important for the community to participate because this is the manifestation. These kinds of projects are the manifestation of what goes into our planning process. So anyway, thank you. Call for the vote.
Mr. Harp?
And just briefly, is the modification okay with the maker of the second of the motion?
The second.
All right.
All right. Okay, let's vote.
I'm sorry, to clarify, was the second or Councilmember Blom or Councilmember Duffield? Okay, thank you very much. And prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for ordinance number 2021-1, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, adopting Plan Community Development Plan Amendment Number PD 2020-001 for the residences at 4,400 Von Carmen Project, located at 4,400 Von Carmen Project, and ordinance number 2021-2, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, approving development agreement number DA 2020-002 for the residents at 4,400 Von Carmen Project, located at 4,400 Von Carmen Project. The motion carries 6-0.
You.
Mayor Avery, I might suggest we have a five-minute break while they get set up for the next item.
Recede for five minutes.